Six P M. We'll start the meeting. You know, actually, well, that's still six fifteen. All right, so, let's see if we have. How many bills, Jay?
One bill.
No bills?
One bill got paid.
P B C. I didn't read the article on it, but it was on the internet. It shows the building that was torn apart, the roof was gone.
And that was from, oh, we should probably.
But it was on yesterday's news.
It was actually paid to us.
Yes.
For a dollar.
Right. And then that's just a couple of letters that you sent out.
Yeah. All right. Minutes, your minutes.
Pretty good time.
We do.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, meeting minutes for Monday, May first, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
There's one.
Second. Is there a discussion?
On the right side.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents? Any correspondence in there? Uh, just quickly, I mean, we won't start the public hearing until six fifteen, 'cause that's what time it's actually scheduled for. Jay, um, can we talk about the, uh, solar company and the, the bill in regards to that?
What bill?
We want to charge the solar company.
Oh, the one said, who wants it?
That we did the work for.
Governance smart program?
No, the one actually pulled, pulled from its, uh...
Yeah, it was eight hundred and something dollars, if I remember. Rick Lil would have the amount from the people that withdrew their application without prejudice on South Street. Um, all we have to do is we have to send that information to Steve Nally, and he will bill them for it. But unless he gets something in the writing, he, from us, he can't bill them as the treasurer.
That wasn't South Street, though, was it?
Yes. Yeah, it was two ones.
Base under South Street.
Yeah.
Which end?
The base end.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where they had sell that worms and fishing gear and stuff out there.
Then?
You remember that, though, you got the amount, it was eight hundred and something?
It was, so it's one, it's one seventy-four South Street. It's for a large-scale ground-mounted solar facility special permit. Looking at eight hundred sixty-one dollars plus thirty-two seventy. So that would make it eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents.
Does that include Larry's money, the consultant, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we get it all, one bill.
So, uh, board, as Jay spoke to, we're looking to actually, uh, bill them to recover our costs that we actually paid, for it to be reviewed by a P B P C, so, um...
So that's more than what was already billed, because Kathy already billed some.
To my knowledge, nothing's been billed except the original application fee. That's why Kathy got it, but... So I don't know exactly the original application she took or whatever. But I think if you write it up such a way, our cost, cost works.
Well, that was part of the other group, so let's see.
You need to weigh that, I believe, anyway.
She billed eight... One seventy-four, I've got this here.
I don't know.
South Street Solar Farm.
Whatever, yeah.
Just don't mention business.
See if we can find an address on here.
See, that's their address.
Got the address, yeah.
Are you guys going to have a quorum tonight?
Don't know.
We don't know, don't look like it yet.
We're waiting. We were just talking about that. We need at least one.
I think, no, this is, this is a different one.
Everybody even call?
This is Kathy's?
Yeah.
I don't have a phone.
'Cause this was actually someone that paid four dollars. This is actually a different one.
Jeremy did the vice.
This is one, they, they started the...
I know that Kathy Lynn has said that she'd be a little late, probably.
Who would be?
Oh, Kathy.
Have they paid that or?
I mean...
Kathy Brown.
Brown. She said she may be a little bit late.
See, there's no consultant fee.
She's got a...
So she'll probably be.
And we were talking about Larry says he paid him eight, nine, three, seventy on that, which we didn't bill them. So that's the question.
We're gonna have to go downstairs and talk to them. We have another meeting after this one, too.
So according to this, uh... I'll pass this around so everybody can see it. It was actually a bill that was originally set forth. But here it says paid, checked them, so... Try to figure out if this was actually paid or not. Because I don't know if that was paid. Check submitted, it's submitted, so that was that there, four thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars. And another check was received for the five hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents, which we bring that down to zero. And then there's the question of, uh, the fees from, uh, the Pineapple Valley Planning Commission.
If you guys, if you guys want, you can have your meeting.
Which was Larry Smith, who was doing project work.
We'll have our part.
And there's a total of eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy cents to.
Keep your, keep your meeting going.
So, um...
Don't worry about us.
We don't have a big agenda.
We need to, that we want to do. Recoup the, that money.
They already paid how much?
Uh, according to this, it looks like they've already paid, if I'm reading this correctly, about four thousand seven hundred and two dollars and forty-three cents.
And how was that number achieved? Just, uh, nobody knows, apparently.
All the butters' letters.
It's on the bill for the advertising.
Town ad. Surrounding towns.
It just doesn't have the consultancy in there.
And then the special permit application, site plan approval was... Okay.
So, so there's an additional eight hundred plus.
Eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy.
Nine hundred minus.
It's a good way to put it, right?
So Steve said, now, is that what you were talking about before, setting up an escrow?
No, that was a separate item.
No, that's just something different.
It seemed to me, see, that a good portion already. I mean, are we looking to...
Yeah, I don't think we need to go back for any more.
Yeah.
They, they pulled out before we went through the whole process, so...
Still, we see the check for, um, almost four hundred dollars. Another check for the, the amount on the top there.
How far did Larry get with it?
I don't think he got too far with it, 'cause they, they pulled out, they did the initial...
Yeah, so he never got a chance to...
Wait, it'd be ten hours into it.
So, maybe.
Yeah. So I wouldn't, I mean, at this point, I think, uh... I, I don't see a need to...
I don't either.
Move further, further with this, at this time, uh, for the eight hundred ninety-three dollars, just based on the amount they've already paid in. And, uh, what we've, what the board itself has done for work on it.
I, I would agree.
Jay, you want to see this?
Uh, no, I've heard you explain it all. Basically, what you, basically, all it stated is you're gonna wait the consultancy and the town, eat the consultancy. Let's see what you're saying.
Well, the, the town's not eating it, per se.
We never got that far.
Yeah, we never got that, and they, they've actually been charged and paid, um, money upfront for, for actually work we haven't, didn't need to do, because they withdrew their application.
Without prejudice.
Right, but they still had paid, so...
Okay, I, I...
Unless they come back.
I just didn't know if the money they had given us covered all the costs that we incurred.
More than.
More than, that's why I'm wondering if we don't have to...
Jay, you want to see, they can take a look at it.
Yeah, again, I heard you explaining the butters list, the lead to town, the ads, and, uh...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's all Kathy Lynn's stuff.
But that was all paid, in addition to the, the top part, the application there.
We should check to see if they have anything due back.
Yeah, that would make sense, too.
By rights?
They should get some, I would think, we gotta, we need to confirm that, but we shouldn't be hanking out to something that is a voluntary.
Right.
They...
But that's the advantage of having an escrow account, like we talked before, we can follow each one independently.
Right, but also them withdrawing without prejudice, they, means that they could be filed, though, for the same thing.
Yeah, they have to, to be filed from scratch.
I would agree.
So what are we doing?
We need to do an audit and see what was spent, to make sure that we've got all our expenses covered, including all the town expenses, including the consulting. And then we need to, uh, send them a check for the difference, I would think.
So, I'm not sure why we're sending them a check, because what we charged for in that bill was just for advertising and the normal things that we would charge them that for, right?
Plus the, uh, special permit and site plan approval that we never went through the whole pro, we never went through the process. The four thousand one hundred and thirty-nine.
Right.
With the understanding that if this does...
They have to re... And, and start the process all over, correct?
Do we need a motion on that?
I would say so.
It would help if we move forward with the motion to, uh, or we just break it up at our next, um, our meeting. We, we have to look at what we've had into it as far as time. We know it's been charged out as far as, um...
None of this is, they don't recoup any of this.
Right, yeah, right.
But we need to find out what was spent on the site plan and the, and the, uh, special permit and the site plan approval. What was, what, um, our consultant... Well, not so much the meetings, but what we were billed from our consultant.
Which we have.
Which we have. Okay, but do we have, but we should see the official...
Official bill.
What, what does that say there? That's just...
That's actually from Larry Smith, those were, was an outstanding, um, charge, and that was from the one seventy-four South Street. Then...
Started, she did it June the second of two thousand seventeen. Yeah, I'll put it up, so you can see.
So we can go back to Larry's bill, but it's got that there.
Right, we can also have Kathy look at it, make sure there is nothing that we are missing.
Well, I think Jim hit it, you'd have to do an audit on it.
Right.
And then, uh, if the town has been paid, and vote for everything, if there is any balance, should it be refunded to the...
Now, Mr. Speaker, do you want to do the audit?
It did go through the highway department, uh, solar farms, comments, so he did have a roundtable.
No, he's, he built us for that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going through what the documents that I have access to here, putting them on board so you can see them.
We're at six fifteen.
Yeah, they've, they've got, got something like twenty-six hundred dollars going back to them.
Yeah.
But we should, we should complete audit, man.
That needs to be done.
You want to make a motion, Jim, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that, uh, and, uh, the town treasurer, the town accountant doing audit on this particular property, one seventy-four South Street, the solar farm, uh, to determine if all bills have been paid, uh, for consulting fees, legal fees, everything else. And if there is a balance on the money received, previously received from this company, that a, uh, refund, the balance being reimbursed to the company.
Is there a second for motion?
I'll say it.
If there's any money that is not covered, which would be withheld, then we would have to address it then.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take care of that. It's now six sixteen, so we're gonna move forward to the, uh, public hearing at this time.
Yeah, but we don't have a, you know, they do not have a...
We'll have our meeting after. All right, if we get another member, so go ahead and have your meeting.
Well, this is posted as a joint meeting.
Well, we'll have to postpone ours. Hopefully, by the time you have yours, we'll...
I don't want to proceed with this.
Although we have to hear you.
Because it's both as a joint meeting, so...
It's posted as a joint, we can't open the meeting until you have a form, a quorum, right?
Yeah.
You are the petitioner?
Yes.
You understand what we're just talking about? The zoning board of appeals does not have a quorum, so we can't vote on it, and it's supposed to be a joint meeting. So we can't open the meeting, if you can wait a little while.
Somebody's coming, somebody's coming.
We get one more member in.
I think someone's coming right now.
That's running late. That's all we need, is one more. All right, so if you can be patient, all right? Appreciate it.
And, door opens?
No.
No. No more applicants.
People sign in, maybe.
While we're waiting, if folks who just came in, if you could please just sign in. Actually print your name and then sign your name, so it's legible. Thank you.
We can't do this one until six thirty.
Do, uh, did you give a chance to talk a little about the minutes from there? Okay. Okay. 'Cause we told Al that we have something for him tomorrow.
We can still do that tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be easy enough for us to do it.
You want to do some of it right now?
I don't know if it starts, but I want to get into it and have to start somewhere.
I wouldn't be psyched to send this.
Just working on a little start, a little start on it, it's up to you.
Well, basically, the last meeting, our discussion, was, was strictly around the, the, um...
Two years.
The zoning bylaws for cannabis.
Is it doing any construction?
So, basically, what...
I haven't seen any vehicles.
What we decided to do was, um, retail would only be in G B.
I don't know, sort of that.
Grow facilities would have to be indoor.
So apparently.
And only allowed in the industrial zone.
Your van and accident.
And the business park overlay. We also wanted to, um, add that, um... Retail wouldn't be allowed within five hundred feet of any, um, school, licensed daycare.
Yeah, I was in there the other day, buying some blades.
Unless it's daycare, and then what?
He's been...
Any public or private.
Yeah, any public or private school, to include licensed daycare.
Yeah.
To include the, the five hundred feet, you still want?
Yes, it's on the five hundred feet.
Everybody's gonna charge you, yeah, roughly the same amount as you're rating.
Okay, so retail's okay, um, within five hundred?
Within five hundred feet from public or private school, but they could have any, they licensed daycare.
License.
Not within. Must be greater than. Must be greater than.
Yeah.
Five hundred feet or better.
Right, we don't want within five hundred.
Right.
That's a big difference.
Yeah.
Or greater. Okay, retail, okay, five hundred feet or greater from public or private school to include any licensed daycare.
We also got to decide how we want to measure that, too. From the end of their property, from... So...
Straight line measurement, property line to property line, correct?
Okay.
If surveyors have to be used, utilized, that is at the...
I think the only thing that's going to put in, in the play is, is the licensed daycare, if there's some, somewhere or not.
But still, it's, it's, it's a cost that's incurred by the...
Yeah.
The applicant.
Right.
Right.
The five hundred feet is measured by straight line method from property line to property line? Is that what it calls, straight line measure?
Correct.
Okay. So what do we need to give, uh, was that it?
No, we have to update the table and update the, uh, paragraphs back.
Right.
The bylaws to get to the bylaw committee and the marijuana committee.
Update the table, and what was the last one?
I think we left off at five point ninety-nine in that section, after the solar, we create a paragraph, then we'll reference it.
We're actually just gonna add in on the table, on the... Because again, check off what's required, what's not required, and...
'Cause I know Al had mentioned that the other towns recommended doing overlay like we do for the other ones, just have marijuana overlay, and what it could be. I don't know if the board wants to do that, or not. That's what Al...
I think just having, I think just having our bylaws, as we spoke to about before, as Jim kind of presented, it just shows where it is, and we'll just add on what's, what's app, applicable for or not.
Okay, so the only thing that you're proposing is updating the table, you're not proposing to put anything in writing in the paragraphs in the bylaws? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think it will.
Well, yeah, you will, because the five hundred feet would have to go into the...
Right.
The writing. Right, right. We just gotta pick a paragraph.
The, uh, also the, the grow facility indoors.
Yep.
You're not.
Yeah.
You know?
And, right, and, but the law, and the law speaks to the other part, as far as it cannot be visible from the street.
That is correct.
Right, so law speaks to that, so I don't mean that needs to be in our bylaw.
No, this is, what we're doing is over and above what Massachusetts general laws to specify for the town.
So...
You want to pull up the zoning bylaws, you want to pick on a paragraph, or you want to insert it?
I think you already kind of picked the spot where you wanted, right? We wanted...
No, he's talking about who.
Oh, who.
We don't want to get into that now.
Yeah.
The, the articles have to be presented, we have to have our hearing presented, and then if passed, then we'll...
Right. And we can actually send this to the, to, uh...
The marijuana and the bylaw committee.
The, the bylaw committee as far as what it is, we don't even have to put it in the table at this point.
No, you can't put it in the table, or you can't even think about it until after it's been approved, if it gets approved.
Right.
Yeah, but don't you have to have the wording of the bylaw in place for, for...
The article will be written that way, yeah. Where it goes is...
Okay.
Is, is a good point, as far as I know, but town attorney will, will review it before it goes.
So do we have to get something we need to out tomorrow? What are you doing?
It'll be great, only because we said we would.
So, but I'm wondering, so, right, we get that from Al and the bylaw committee, I mean, it's really out of our purview, but then they'll send it off if it's approved on the town floor. And then it goes off to the A G, and if it gets approved there, it'll come back to us, and at that time, we're gonna put it on the table, decide where it goes.
Yeah.
And also, as at the last, not the last, the previous marijuana ad hoc committee meeting, it was requested by chair of the zoning board of appeals to include the zoning board of appeals in whatever we were talking about doing.
Do that, too?
So, just C C.
Yeah.
A copy.
So, am I doing anything here, or what, we is a big we here?
Well, I think at first, what we need to do is approve what we just suggested as a board, because if we're gonna approve that, that's what we're gonna send to the ad hoc committee for marijuana and, uh, the bylaw committee.
So, we're, we, we, what we want to tell them is we're updating the table, or are we adding the bylaw exactly? Is that what we're...
Well, we do both.
Right. But as, first of all, we, we have to, we have to review this as a board, and that's what will be sent to, as I said, the marijuana ad hoc committee and the, uh, bylaw committee. We're not saying where we're gonna put it yet, because that's, as I said, that's, they gotta, they gotta look at it, it's gotta go to the town floor, be approved. Then it's gonna be sent off to the attorney general's office, go through that step, be approved there, come back to us, and at that time, we'll decide where we're gonna put it.
I think the board goes to attorney general's office, it'll be assigned a paragraph, I mean, based upon the elements, actually.
Well, well, right, we're gonna put it, we're gonna put as to what we want it to say and how we want it to say it, but then it'll go off, and after it's approved, it comes back, and that's where, then we'll insert it into our bylaws.
We'll insert, but we're saying that paragraphs that go to the paragraph.
Well, yeah, and, and, but that's something that the bylaw committee, as we mentioned, we'll look at that.
So we don't have to tell them which exactly where right now? We just have to tell them we're adding this wording to the bylaw.
I, I think all they're looking for, I think all the marijuana ad hoc committee is looking for at this point in time, is some approved guidance from the planning board.
Yeah, that, the, the articles and all that won't be written until after the hearing, or, or right before the hearing, but we're gonna be presenting.
Okay.
Because there's hearings and the vote, and, uh, the A G. Several steps, we're just beginning to step here.
So everything you outlined, yeah, retail only in general position?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll recap and make the motion, you want me to do that? Okay.
Who's making a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Make a motion that retail will only be allowed in G B.
I would think there would be that a commercial in retail, 'cause that way it would include both the, uh, the registered marijuana dispensary and the regular store. If you just say retail, you're not talking about the dispenser, I would just use the commercial, 'cause they both have a commercial.
Okay.
So retail ain't commercial, or retail slash commercial?
Retail's...
You want two, or we can do one? I said, why do two, when we can do one again?
Right.
So retail slash commercial.
And only be allowed in G B?
And, and, and no closer than five hundred feet. Property line to property line.
Straight line, P.
How we saying, straight line, property?
Property line to property line, straight line.
Okay. Two, and then... Okay, two, and then we're doing?
And then just?
Public or private?
That'll all be one article, hopefully.
Okay.
Just read that back, will you?
Retail slash commercial, are we saying marijuana, are we saying, what are we saying, are we actually saying marijuana?
They're probably cannabis.
Yeah. Yeah, cannabis.
Okay, that cannabis. Retail, commercial will only be allowed in GB and no closer than 500 feet, property line to property line, straight line to public or private school to include any licensed daycare.
Okay.
That's your motion.
That's one, that's one phase of motion, the second, the second piece is that any commercial growth, any commercial growth facility, any commercial growing will have to be in an indoor facility.
I would change that to any commercial operations, I don't include manufacturing and all that, not just growth, any commercial operation. Because they do have quite a list of areas you can do in, in the.
Slash, grow, slash.
Shall be?
Indoor facilities only. And, and allowed?
And industrial and business park overlay.
Correct.
That's it?
I would second.
Can we read it one more time?
Cannabis retail slash commercial will only be allowed in GB and no closer than 500 feet property line to property line, straight line to public or private school to include any licensed daycare. Any commercial growth slash operation shall be indoor facilities only and allowed in industrial and business park overlay.
I would suggest I think we should have GB spelt out.
General business?
Yeah.
By law, my general business process is GB.
And the retail special permit site plan approval.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, these are all subject to special permit site plan approval.
In GB, in general business.
So we can say both are subject to?
Special permit and site plan approval.
I don't think we said that for the commercial, the grow.
No, that's in GB.
But it's like, that's.
That's just in GB. The only thing in the other two was.
Okay, so this goes up there?
Yeah.
This is subject, it's not here, subject to special permission. And you go blah, 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 okay, got it.
Does anybody wanna hit a motion again?
Yeah, I'd like to hear it again.
Okay. Motion that cannabis retail slash commercial will only be allowed in general business, why does that not sound like, commercial? What's the difference between commercial and industrial?
Well, it's retail or commercial, not retail commercials, retail or commercials will be allowed in general business.
Okay, cannabis retail slash commercial, slash or?
Yes, yes.
Will allow, will only be allowed in general business, GB, and no closer than 500 feet property line to property line, straight line to public or private school to include any licensed daycare. This is subject to special permit and site plan approval.
By the planning board.
By the planning board. By the planning board. Any commercial growth slash operation shall be indoor facilities only and allowed in industrial and business park overlay.
With site plan approval by the planning board.
Shall we start from the top again?
Yeah.
No, that's good.
Don't miss it.
Oh, I got it, does anybody wanna hear it again?
No, I don't wanna hear it again.
Can I take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have?
Let me take a break, and then you can take off, and then I'll do the deal with.
All right. You can cancel it, we'll have to reschedule it at that time.
I'm gonna leave it up to them if they wish to stay, as we said before.
Who are we waiting for, what can we call, or whoever? Who are we waiting for, what can we make the phone call, see if somebody's on the way?
I don't have any phone number, that's the problem, all right, neither do, and I don't have a phone, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know, they, they offer theirs too, I don't have the phone numbers, all right? It was supposed to be one woman that said that she would be running late, but that she didn't get out of work until five o'clock, I think it was, and so that she would be running late. And I hadn't heard, I'm only the co-chairman, all right, the chairman had another appointment, doctor's appointment, so he asked me to run a meeting, all right? So he won't be here, but the other ones hadn't answered an email in reference to attending the meeting tonight, all right? So I don't know what the story is with them, all right? We're hoping, of course, that if nothing else, that Kathy, our other member, she would show up late, like she said she would.
Before we discontinue this, I'm on the website page with all the names of your members, if you give me what member you want, I'll Google and see if I can get the phone number out there. Brian, Brian Kennedy.
Brian Kennedy?
You want Brian Kennedy?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see if I can get him. Get it done.
Or Kathy Bronner, see if she's on the way.
I only can do one at a time.
Yeah. See if she's on.
Brian on West Street, pardon, is he on West Street, Brian? No?
No, Brian, check out the street.
She, she lives on Morgan.
Brian lives on school, doesn't he?
I'm sure, I think it's school.
Should we take?
Oh, yeah, I'm actually, I have to step out, it's 45, so I'm gonna give Jay a second or two here to see if he finds, finds anything, if not, I'm gonna step, step away. And turn over to the co-chair, let him run the meeting, because I wanna start the meeting now, not be here for something, so not fair.
You understand too, Joe?
You got a piece of paper?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, you got a blank picture on there?
Just so you know, the zoning board, because, 49th ward, so we just can't do the quote.
Okay. You trying to call Kennedy, Brian?
Yeah, I got his number.
Yeah, we don't wanna have you, have you, reschedule it, come back, I'm sure you're in a hurry to get the project going.
Who's gonna like the call?
I can call.
You wanna do it off camera?
Do it off camera, I need a.
I need a phone. Put it so it's dialled.
That's all.
1413. But if I'll dial out, step away.
I'll hit it, I'll set it.
Coming back.
If you're still here, I will get out and come back.
The only button you're gonna hit is this one over here, under the, under the silver one, okay, at that, I can hit it, you can walk along.
Okay, sure.
Turn it off because of the recording.
Yep.
Thank you. You want me to put it in the speakers, either haircut or?
Dan, what's your, what's your schedule to get into the?
Publicity was my schedule for starting.
Oh, that would be, we, that has to go through. Right, because we just drafted a portion and give to them, and they'll put together, then.
Give us a few more minutes, so if we can get a quote, otherwise we're gonna have to reschedule.
We just gotta do one portion. Kathy London would, we're the ones setting up the notices, whatever dates are defined. He's asking when we're gonna have the hearing for cannabis, and I said, we have no control.
It'll be posted like the.
No, I want Kathy. Yeah, we can put the word shall on there, we have a lot of.
Okay, Kelly Bernier?
Okay, I'll read it back.
I just got a voicemail. Dial Kathy's number.
Yeah, I gotta look.
Come on up. Step aside while I, please. Okay. Correct. Site plan, unless what we have here. Yeah, we're gonna need a hard copy, but explain to me what's going on here, what you're, what you're proposing. Okay, this is all structural and floor plans, we're not interested in that.
Okay.
Just in site, so, that's the only thing that's under our purview, so, if you can just explain to the board what you're proposing.
Pretty much, you know, the building's there, we did add on to the building.
Okay.
So in addition, there's 500 square feet, and it's all handicap accessible.
Yeah, I saw the ramp.
Yeah, cut the bathrooms, handicap bathrooms.
Yeah.
And dormant, we did it many years ago.
So.
Wants to open.
So this is, this is your, this is Crescent Street here, 202 is over here, you've got access in here, where's your parking?
Right here.
So on one handicap? Where are the other parks? Two, three, okay.
Um, work, it's a handicap, five, level here is.
One, two, handicap, is this, is this a parking place, or is this going out to?
No, that's a parking spot.
So you got three?
Yeah.
Four, this one here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, going that way, there's four, five, six.
Who's the sixth?
Seven. Seven spaces. And where are you proposing the? Yeah, well, eight, including the handicap.
Okay. So the handicap ramp is, is right here, which comes into the building. This is the house, and down, we're already zoned all commercial, all this first floor of the house is zoned commercial.
So you're gonna take up like 400 space down our new addition, that we built.
Yeah.
Now.
And up here, of this part here.
Where do you plan on putting the signage?
The signage, we don't really have, there's a, you know, we had an original sign there from 1985, when we had a tail business, you know, when we started that. Yeah, we have a picture here in the cell phone, but we don't really have, it was, the sign now is an existing sign, or the old sign that was approved by the county board back in 2005, I believe.
So, so what exactly is it that you're gonna be doing in there?
I'm gonna be opening up the herb shop, so I'm gonna be selling topical.
Okay, retail. It's currently being used that you are currently licensed as catering and takeout retail?
Well, we're not, we're not open with that, that someday maybe, but we're not.
Yeah, we're just catering there right now, with us.
We cater, I promise.
We have it in the house.
We have a commercial kitchen.
We have a commercial kitchen in the house, and all our refrigeration, and that's basically, and we cater, you know, we go out to locations. We were, you know, we do have 20 seats.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you were approved for retail, restaurant, you were already approved for that.
Not restaurant, just catering.
But if you had seats?
Yeah, there's letters.
Right, we could cater, we could cater in the building for 20 seats.
So, does anybody else have any other questions for?
So this is zone, general business?
General business, yeah.
Okay, I'm just thinking about, because there are some, not that you're gonna do it, or I don't know if you're going to, but the, the oil from the marijuana could be used in making.
No, she's, she's not gonna get into that, yeah.
But, but yeah, but it would cover it.
They'd be covered there, but it'd be under a different license, they'd have to be licensed to do that. Or maybe not, it's not under our purview anyway, the licensing, she said it, so.
That's not, I'm sorry, me right now.
I don't see any use changes, I don't see any, anything different.
What about the sign though?
You're gonna have to file a permit for the sign. If it, you're gonna have to go get a permit for the sign, and if it exceeds what's allowed, then you're gonna have to be back before us for a special permit.
There's a sign board underneath our sign. Yeah, last time we were.
You still have to file, it doesn't matter if it's upside down, or, doesn't matter, you have to go get a permit.
You mean a square footage of it?
Right, lighting, anything that goes beyond what's allowed, would have to come. So.
File for a permit?
Yeah.
The building inspector, code enforcement officer, when you file, he's gonna wanna see a picture, he's gonna wanna see the square, and if there's anything there that triggers him to say it's not allowed without a permit, or a special permit, then you're good to go, so I suggest you find out what the bylaw reads and make sure you stay within that parameter and you'll be fine. But other than that, it's retail or retail, I don't see any use change from what it was originally, you've got, you've got plenty of parking, you've got access from the, from, what's that? Yeah, well, it's further down.
Yeah, we're down more.
So I don't, I don't. Then, make a motion, if you need a motion, then.
Make a motion that we approved the.
We didn't, we reviewed it, there was no, there's nothing there to approve. It's not a.
You are correct, because when the guy went in at the chateau with that food business. Uh, we didn't, we didn't. We wished him well, that's, you're right, that's all we did, we wished him well. Right.
So no use change from the original, it's retail to retail.
Yeah.
So we don't need to?
So we don't need to take a vote on anything.
So they're all set, so all we gotta do is file a supplement for the site.
Right, but make sure you have a drawing, not a picture, with an actual drawing with the sizes and everything else.
Yeah, just make a sketch of it, draw it out.
So they have something.
Dimensions.
Something they can keep. To back them up with their records.
And if you're gonna attach it to the existing sign.
Yeah.
You need the dimensions told.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, just so you know.
Within the holes or the whole?
The holes included, everything.
So the whole, the whole.
Because it looks at it, at the whole sign, not just pieces. And I don't wanna see you do it twice.
I remember when we went in front of the planning board with the sign bag, the company, we had everything there, well. So it was approved, you know?
Okay, well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Where he lives, Alan. Oh. He's on, yeah.
The original, there's a lot of papers. Not in here. But you need all the papers. Glenn didn't leave them. I think he didn't take them.
We didn't see it, no.
Yeah, I have my copy, but it's, it's everything that, maybe it was everything that was there. This is my copy, so. Yeah, this, this, this one, oh, there's two.
Is that what you're talking about, what you're gonna show?
Yes, that's it.
You want it larger or smaller? That's good, like that? Okay, just show them quicker. Makes it easier. Is the barn gonna be over here?
The original paper look is going to be. I hope Glenn has it.
I can put the guy right in here. This is my house.
This is my house.
This is near Steve. This is my existing garage, so the barn is gonna be right in here, L-shaped this way. The property pin is right in here. Oh, I'm sorry, property pin, I own all these trees now. The pin is somewhere right in here. So the barn's gonna be tucked into the hill in L-shaped this way. Okay, let's, let's hold off.
I'm just trying to get. I'm just trying to get set up, that's, that's all I'm trying to do. Not trying to do anything.
Is somebody on the way?
Yes. And I'm just trying to speed things up by having the map up already, that's all I'm trying to do. Not trying to do anything else.
As I told Alan.
Do you see how this is?
As quick as possible. So he can get back to his company.
I can't do a ground view with you, cause there's nothing in there. So all we can do is satellite view. If this is a street, occasionally they go down the street and you film both sides. And I can get that, but since you're not visible from the street, all I can do is a satellite phone. Jay, on that flash drive, does it say three twenty-six? It does say three twenty-six Amherst Street, but they're telling me it's three oh six. Then might have, must have been labeled incorrectly.
Yeah, mine says three oh six.
Yeah, mine says three oh six.
Yeah, I.
That's the actual address?
It's three oh six.
Yeah.
But the flash drive they gave me here for all the drawings says three twenty-six. That's all they were trying to point out.
Is the drawings you're looking for, Jim?
It's the plans. So it's a ribbon light state?
I believe that, well, Jay's got those.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got the one too.
Page one here, and I put page two here.
The big sheets, he's got the.
And Jim's doing the physical sheets. But I have a small copy. Now, in the business owner, wouldn't it just come as this one? This. Uh, it's all the business, or a portion of it. Cause I was getting the phone done to him at the time you were talking about. No, this is all residential. Well, that's why I'm asking. Cause I heard him say business. I thought, is this, this is gonna be strictly residential?
Residential.
Okay, I misunderstood, maybe it was like cross talk. My new number's gonna cost you a couple beers or pizza.
I'll call for it.
Okay.
I think we instantly have to make a motion to close the regular unit.
Well, as soon as the gentleman shows up.
Yeah.
That way, if we wanna do some of our own business, if we keep doing it. Can you let me get a shot, do you want? I'll change that three twenty-six to three oh six on the. Jay, did we ever come up with a place to file those? No, we have not yet, we have discussions on it, but we haven't decided what we're gonna do with them. So they come in a brown envelope and we just put them in there. Myself, when I get them on this, just to show you since we're on our own time, what I do here. And I don't have any Amherst Street yet, so I'm making the Amherst Street. Under Amherst Street, this is three oh six, so I'll create another folder. Called three oh six. And that's that, and what I'll do is I'll be down here. If anybody was to go through this again, they'd go to Granby, Granby Streets, Amherst Street, number three oh six, and there it is.
Does that make sense?
Sure. But where does the, but what do we do with the physical, hard, uh, flash drive?
We've just been putting them in the cabinet for right now, but there's no writing reason, the way that looks except the brown envelope, or Kathy writes the address on.
I see.
We had discussed it as far as, do we wanna buy the USB cabinet so we can plug them in and do it? Or do we wanna use like the bank envelopes and put them in the brown and write the address on them and file them like that? But as far as how I do it electronically, I do it like that. So that can tell you on everything that we have done on any one of these streets, you can pick up anything you want.
Yep.
I would like it sometime to be able to transfer that to the town server. So that way, anybody that supersedes us in the future would keep it or can access it from the town server. And then make additions, whatever they want from there. Because I got the network configured in here, it's running three times faster than it was before. I just have to update the software. Increase it by three times.
Great.
New library wants me to do this next time, I'm having a time. Can't talk about that, I'm cheating.
I guess it's peaceful, it's not peaceful.
Yeah.
That big piece of property. It was nineteen acres.
Do you want to create a file cabinet? Do you want to create a file cabinet?
I don't think so. Or if you want, I'll take one.
So you kept one of these?
And we, we haven't opened a meeting in us yet. I used to follow up, you put it on, but marijuana stuff, you guys have.
I was gonna say, why do I have that on there?
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
We're gonna be informed. So that's.
Probably.
Cause you're gonna do the variances if anyone.
It's an aspect.
If there's a need for it.
If there's a need for it, that's. By the keywords.
No, I thank you for that.
Can you change downstairs?
Yeah, right here.
Nope, no.
No, right here, Alan. Okay, this is our other member.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem, here. Yes, oh, I didn't get that message.
I'll make a motion that we.
What's that?
It's a joint meeting.
Oh.
Close our current meeting, or we close our meeting to be reopened after the public hearing.
I'll second. Any discussion?
What is it like?
All in favor of the file?
There's paperwork under there. All the work that we worked on is this side line.
They have to go help them exceed on the screen, buddy.
Yeah. That's the property.
Jay, you guys all set?
Yep. Go right ahead.
Grandy Board Appeals, along with the Grandy Planning Board, Joint Public Hearing for Tuesday, May fifteenth, at originally scheduled six fifteen.
What are you looking to do?
We're opening it at seven oh five PM, at one library, Conrady Library, top floor, to consider petition of Daniel Thiero. Seeking a special permit under section six point two and play plan approval under six, under section six point three of the Granby zoning bylaws. An applicable of the section three regulations, three point one oh five accessory use regarding the private garage or stables exceeding twelve hundred square feet. An area to be located thirty, three oh six Amherst Street, Granby, Mass, known as map ten dash C dash seven dot one.
Okay, meeting's open. Would you like to present your, your application?
Well, I'm looking to do a thirty twelve, just under thirty-two hundred square foot, uh, storage slash barn. Can I put that up on the screen and kind of show?
Yeah, I'm doing it right now, but to some reason, it just won't.
The layout of my property, existing property, and. Amherst Farm, yeah.
And this is the barn right here?
Double side.
So what, what is the variance?
No, it's twenty foot, twenty foot sideline and.
Fifteen?
It's got, oh, yeah.
Just under thirty-two hundred square feet.
So it's gonna be thirty-one seventy-five?
Dan, your application says a forty by eighty.
Forty by eighty, correct. And we narrowed it up, I gave her, gave Kathy new paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you got the copies. I think the intent is to stay under thirty-two hundred square feet, forty by eighty puts you at thirty-two hundred.
So what are your measurements now?
The application is showing thirty-two hundred square feet and it's showing a forty by eighty. And your plans that we have are showing a forty by eighty, your elevations and your, your.
That was probably the originals that we gave to Kathy, but we had also had another set. Cause I had a neighbor come down, we looked at how to set this. And the original way of setting it, he was, well, he was fine with it, but by setting it into my hill, this is all trees in here.
Yep.
Kinda hides it all.
So you, so there's new elevation and floor plans, or is this?
That, well, that will be the look of it, but it's gonna be, there's an L-shaped to it.
This is all check this.
The gist of it is to stay at thirty-two hundred square.
We have that as the main focus of this.
What, what was the purpose of that?
Size of it.
I don't wanna go too much greater than that.
You got any, any discards? Any tropicals?
The L shape?
Yeah.
I have that, but the paperwork doesn't match it.
It says forty, but you're. Yeah. Size is different like the last time.
Okay, so we're talking thirty-one hundred and seventy-five square feet, L-shaped. Can you show us how you're gonna access, so this, this, this elevation is. So this is the front elevation here, so this is your.
This is side, this will be the front doors. This will be a gable end, that'll be a gable end.
Okay. Gotcha.
This is driveway coming up.
Okay.
This will be driveway coming in.
You're twenty feet off your.
Correct, we have a fifteen, but I'm going twenty.
Twenty. You own this parcel?
This is my driveway coming up currently, and it'll be. This is my driveway coming up currently, and it'll be driveway up, wide off.
Everything slopes this way?
Everything slopes this way.
This way.
This is all the hill coming down. I would say the elevation from this pin to here is probably a 25-foot drop.
Is this conservation land here?
No.
This is over here.
This is a ravine down in here.
Okay.
And the bachelor street's over here with one house over here.
Okay.
So that's, we have no topographical? So where are the land slopes and stuff like that?
So you own this, you've got, there's gotta be what, 80 feet from here to here?
Oh, not in that. It must be something. Just, uh, from this pin to here, uh, at least 100 plus.
Okay.
I had it. It looks like we lost the internet, so I can't do the topographical.
Okay. Does anybody, anybody else have any questions for Dan?
This is a checkoff list for...
Here's a checklist for that, site plan, Jim.
Yep.
That meets all those pieces of the bill.
There's one question I have, is if, if the application paperwork doesn't match, what do we do?
Oh, it did match the last time that we had it, and we made the changes and the applicant paid the difference, and then we recorded it in our minutes and gave it back to Kathy London as corrected. Okay. It doesn't mean that the, the, the proper paperwork isn't in the town's possession. We just didn't receive it here tonight.
Right.
So... We can still vote based on, based on that tonight.
There's no, how many questions?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get to that quite yet.
I can't do the topographical, I have to do the internet stuff. Must be the storm that we had. He said he saw some Comcast structure on the ground. That's why it disappeared on the ground.
So you don't need any, um, screening or anything because your...
Correct.
Cheese or whatever.
Yep. Anything going in there for utilities, other than power?
Just power.
Sun, water, waste disposal, anything?
No.
Not to say electric telephone, cable, TV, and other such utilities shall be underground or physically and environmentally feasible.
Underground as it is feeding my house, it's all for me to put underground services in this.
So, but that's one of the...
Okay.
Things that has to be.
I'm gonna open up comments from the, from the public, anybody? I guess that's a no. Does zoning have any comments to make?
You have the side lot, 20-foot.
Yes.
What's the distance here?
Where?
In the front.
You own this whole lot?
Oh, I own the whole lot.
He owns this whole lot.
Oh, yeah, but there's plenty, there's...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. All right, that's all. That's all we need, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do we need a second?
Hang on a second before we do that.
If you want to see the anyone's better, you'll have to make a motion to close the public hearing for this, and then we'll have our decision.
Okay. We've got a motion on the table to close the public hearing.
Same as what they're, no.
I have no problem closing the public hearing because nobody wants to speak anyway.
So that's a second, Jay?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. We'll make a motion to close our portion of it, okay?
Make a motion to close our second portion of the hearing.
We've heard enough. Second?
Yep.
Oh, who? Hey, okay.
So I'll make a motion to reopen our meeting. Right?
No, we don't have to do that. We just have to...
Then we do the vote on it, right?
What's that?
We do what, we do the vote on it after the meeting's reopened.
Right, but it's still in session too. We just closed the public portion, we didn't close the whole.
Oh, you're correct. So... I think what we should, if, if the board chooses to, to vote on this tonight, then we should vote on the footprint that the applicant has, that he's standing by, and then, and then if the other paperwork coincides with that, then... That Kathy probably got, didn't get a chance to get down here and, and bring it to us.
So basically what you're saying is a 35-foot by 80-foot building with a 25-foot by 50-foot L.
Correct.
On it.
That's correct. With, with similar, similar elevation.
Similar. 35 by...
25 by 15 and 35 by 80. Total of 3,175 square feet.
The only problem I have is we have nothing topographically to make sure none of the water is gonna run into the neighbor's property.
It all runs to the neighbor's property, as it currently sits from what the applicant just stated.
Everybody comes at me.
Oh, we're going on your part, yes.
I've got one neighbor behind me, and he's coming at me, we're on the hill.
Well, see, if I forget the internet, we could see that.
Well, Jay, break it, break it.
You got it here?
My sister. He owns all of this.
Okay.
And there's, there's a couple hundred feet between here and here.
That I...
And everything slopes this way.
Everything slopes.
Okay, cause I...
On that map, we can't see the slope.
Even, even though the, we've closed the hearing, so.
We have, we closed the public portion, okay? You gotta go through this checklist, make sure everything's just...
Do you have any special conditions first?
I don't have any. I can't think of anything.
To be used for commercial and...
Yeah, residential only, no commercial. Cause some people come in with big projects like this, then in terms of commercial, they start writing out stalls and stuff like that.
Never.
Okay. That's why it's gonna say no commercial.
And you wanna go through the site plan criteria here? Who wants to put in?
If you'd like to, you're next.
Is that what is part of the vote to add those in?
We just go through the criteria, and if they're all yes, then we just conclude what the regular paperwork shows is documented.
Okay, ready, prepared for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Criteria, one. If the proposal requires a special permit, it must conform to special permit requirements as listed in section 6.2 of the bylaws.
That's yes.
I would say yes on that, if you wanted to.
I'm not gonna read all these out. Two, the development shall be integrated into the existing terrain surrounding landscape and shall be designed to protect the budding properties and...
That would be a yes?
That would be a yes. Okay, number three, architectural style shall be compatible.
I would say that should be a yes.
325 is not applicable? Closing right here?
What's that? Okay.
We have something else, maybe that's what we have to do.
The development will, shall be served with adequate water supply and waste disposal, and it may have to...
That's not applicable.
...have more business. Number five, plan shall, shall maximize convenience and safety of vehicular pedestrian, that's not applicable here, it's residential. Number six...
Yep. Let's just go straight down.
The site, the, the site plan shall show adequate measures to prevent pollution of surface or groundwater to minimize erosion and sediment, sedimentation.
That's why I was asking for the topographical.
Say we have some then.
Yes. Development will not place excessive demands on town services and infrastructure.
This is what we're talking about, two children speaking.
Yeah, underground, said yes. Number nine, exposed storage areas, machinery and service areas, truck loading, areas, utility buildings and structures and all unsightly use shall be set back, screened or protected. No, that's the whole purpose of putting his equipment inside, so that's a yes. And then, last but not least, the site plan shall comply with any zoning requirements for parking, loading, et cetera.
It's a yes?
It's a yes. Is there a motion on the table?
Is the public, is the discussion done?
As I know.
Okay. There's a motion to reopen the meeting. Right?
No, we can...
No, we see that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, site plan as shown to us, a 35-foot by 80-foot building with a 15 by 25-foot L attached to it. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion as long as the paperwork gets put together and the right way, it's all.
We wanna add that as a condition?
Yeah. Took that, that's gonna be the town's responsibility and is to make sure the paperwork matches. It doesn't match now, so we wanna make it match, we'd like it to come back.
That should be a condition, that should be part of the motion. We're just, I, I just made a motion to approve as shown.
You must amend the motion to include the condition that the rest of, we have the correct paperwork that coincides with the plans.
So is that part of the motion, or is that part of the conditions that are gonna be on the...
We can say very exactly, you make the motion to approve with the condition that the paperwork matches as defined, then you go to second the motion, then it's asked if there's any discussion, and then you go on from there.
So with the condition that paperwork is, what was that?
Coincides with the, the, the plans.
Plans presented? That's discussed, so approve the special permit with, I'm sorry, not special permit site plan. With the condition that paperwork coincides with the plans presented as discussed. Period, we'll stop.
Period. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set?
I'll sit. You're sitting with Dan. Now you gotta come down. We're the ZBA, all right? And, uh, we just have to primarily look at it, set backs. All right, to make sure that you hold your, your set backs.
I'll remake a motion to open our meeting.
And you presented it, we're having our discussion now.
Aye.
Whether we approve or disapprove it. All right, we've already heard it. If somebody wants to make a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? You're good.
Yep.
Paperwork will follow.
Yes.
We'll, we'll give it to Kathy.
Okay.
And 20 days.
So...
After, you need to start getting, yeah, 20 days. Okay, thank you.
We're just gonna go down.
Good luck. Yep. Joe, we're gonna run down today. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, have a good one. We work together, that's all accounts for...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, well, we need, we can sign, sorry.
Oh. I got a nod from Venta. Let's go.
On the, on the next agenda, please, for the next agenda. Do we have any things specific, are we still doing the bylaw changes, or are we still...
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to, um, revisit the, the bylaw changes that we're proposing outside of the Mar-a-Lago. And I'd like to have a full board here when we do that.
And should we have, I can't remember the lady's name, PVPC?
Susan Wester.
Yeah, it'd probably be good to have her here, then she can clean it up for us and get it, get it presentable to, so we might be able to...
Sneak it in on the same special town meeting?
Maybe.
At least get some of it done.
Yeah.
So, let me back up on the, um, what... I wish Art is looking for tomorrow.
It's in our minutes.
Just send him a copy of the draft minutes?
See him, copy the draft minutes, just like you gotta do the ZBA, gotta CC them a copy.
Okay. Okay. So I don't have to send him anything other than the draft minutes? Okay.
Cause everything is a draft.
That's right.
Everything is a draft.
Um, we could go by the, go through the to-do, action items that are basically done, that we can thin them out. There's only like three of them. And there's Glenn following up with Chris Martin regarding the planning board budget, and Larry Smith and Greece, that's completed. He's got it signed. And review of South Street buildings with Kathy, which we've done twice already now. And make bylaw changes for review at the next meeting, I'm gonna change that date to ongoing. Because...
That's what I've got here. That's what I have here. Make bylaw changes for review at next meeting, low, ongoing.
Oh, well, that's not a live track. Okay.
The, uh, the, on your, here, your name should be in for contacting Sue on the escrow accounts. But then we changed that, that you were gonna contact Steve Nally, remember? Steve said he would take care of it, instead of Sue.
And he, yes.
So we need to change it here, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So you would be the responsible party, you say, change Sue's name to Steve Nally. And that's what, Massachusetts General Law 53G, I think it is, for the escrow accounts.
Okay.
Who, who wants to contact, can you contact Pioneer Valley to have her at our next meeting?
I can do that.
Okay, so Jay, you're gonna ask her to go, come to the next meeting?
Yeah. Unless you want, because you're working with her on that DLT, that's up to you. I don't know if you wanna try and squeeze something in at the same time. I don't know if you wanna try and squeeze something in at the same time, to, no, to maximize your time, because she's doing something with DLT.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Actually, it'd be nice to hear from her, if she does come for the bylaw to...
An update on DLT?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we only have one meeting on that, so far.
And if she can't make it to our next meeting, then...
Then you have to look.
With the DLT, you know, try and get them both on the same night.
Yeah, we don't wanna be paying her traveling back and forth, in other words, we don't have to, we don't have to do it the next meeting.
The DOTA, we can do whenever she is able to appear.
That means another requirement that we need, because we got to thirty one December to get there.
So I wanted to be at the next meeting for the bylaw reviews.
If possible. Now, are we, are we having another Tuesday meeting, the next meeting?
Yes, because Monday is a holiday. So it'll be Tuesday, but we don't know where it'll be because conservation may be...
I would recommend, if you wanna take an action, to book a room at the New Library. Again, I'm only one person.
That's a nice room.
And they have two rooms that we can use, not just one.
The one's bigger than the other, right?
Right, one has a seventy inch screen, one's a sixty inch screen.
We don't have anything that big, it's not a, unless it's a public hearing of some sort.
Right.
I don't think so.
I'll, I'll book, if you want me to take the action, I'll ask Jen for the big room. If we can't get the big room, then we'll take the other one.
Which room are we in the other evening?
The big one.
The big one.
And that's the one we would use if we had a public hearing, because the little room is just a table with seats on both sides, and that's it.
And that's where the library trustees were seated?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, Jay, you can go ahead and take that one then.
So I only have, I have two action items, I gotta finish the LED wording for the bylaw, and I gotta get ahold of Jen for the day after Memorial Day to book a room at the New Library, those are my two action items.
Correct.
Okay.
Did this have a cover on it?
Uh, when you handed it to me, it didn't.
That is, it's one of those tricky ones.
Okay.
Okay? You're up.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I will second Bobby's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.